All right, good afternoon. It is 2:00 PM on November 27th, the day before Thanksgiving here. If you would please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are having a workshop this afternoon. Called this meeting to order. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
My move, we approve the agenda as written.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further question or comment? Roll please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
All right.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, so next on the agenda is number three. Finance software options, presentation and discussion. Ms. Harvey.
Good afternoon. Thank you for everybody coming. We have three members of the OpenGov team here with us today. Andrew, Karen and Mark. And they will be the ones doing the presentation. And, hi, welcome. And we'll go ahead and get started. Andrew.
Perfect. Well, thank you for the introduction. And thank you for allowing us to present here at the mission meeting today. Really quickly, just start with the introductions from the OpenGov side. So my name is Andrew Pirrato, account executive here at OpenGov. And I work specifically with all of our customers in the state of Oregon, as well as the whole Pacific Northwest. Karen and Mark, do you want to give quick introductions and background?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Karen Bulliard. And I am a recent employee of OpenGov, but had worked with them in the past in my role as finance director. I have 28 years of accounting and finance experience, with the last 15 years in municipal government as a finance director and city administrator.
And Mark Welch, Director of Government Consulting with OpenGov. Similar to Karen, just joined the team a couple of months ago. My last employer was the city of Ashland. I was administrative services director. Just got a ton of use out of OpenGov in terms of how we were able to develop our budget, do our workforce. And more importantly, communicate that out and inform and educate our residents and the city council. So join the team to help others see that same success and just excited to talk to fellow Oregonians today.
All right.
Great. So as far as the agenda goes today, what I'm planning to give is just a high-level introduction to OpenGov and really relating to the discussions that we've had with Cheryl Lynn, as well as Julie Schmelzer and a lot of the other Curry County team members over the last few months. And sharing how OpenGov might be used to help the county facilitate a strategic plan, strategically budget, report, and then also engage the public. And so what we'll do is we'll go over the introductions of the Curry County goals that we've discussed over the last few months. And then we'll jump into the demonstration of more of the public-facing side of OpenGov for budgeting, reporting, citizen engagement, and strategic planning. And then we'll pivot and then we'll go into the backend accounting system that staff will use for data entry and running finances. And then we'll leave some time for Q and A. Cheryl, does that sound like an okay agenda?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. Great. And again, I apologize. I wish I could be there in person, but I'm not in the room as it's probably obvious to be. So please, you know, if there's any questions or Cheryl, if you want to guide or add in your feedback or input, please stop us, let us know. I happen to answer questions along the way.
Okay. I'll let you know if we get any. Thank you, Andrew.
Okay. Perfect. So, you know, just as a quick summary. And by the way, is everyone able to see the slides that are up on the screen?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, great. So just add a quick summary to the discussions that we've had with the Curry County team over the last few months. You know, we've kind of taken stock of the current situation for finance, the financial system, and generally technology within the county. And narrowing it down in a quick summary here in this slide, you know, really working with Cheryl Lynn and team, there's been a big push to really modernize and streamline a lot of operations within the county. You know, both on the financial reporting and budgeting side, but then also just on the ability for the county to strategically plan and then share information to residents about the strategic plan, to share the direction that the county is going. There's also been a push to move to a more paperless type of process and to help staff be more efficient. And that's what we'll show you here today. Cheryl, is that a good, a good summary? Or is there anything you'd like to add?
No, that was perfect.
To make sure that's all accurate.
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. And so what we'll go over today is, you know, first, kind of the outputs of the system. So what department heads, what commissioners, what residents will be able to see and what they'll be able to track utilizing the OpenGov financial platform. And really, you can think about it breaking into three main areas. So the first being really the ability for the county to strategically budget and plan, not just for the upcoming year, but for future years. The operational performance in the middle. So the ability for commission and management to track information from a lot of different systems and sources of information throughout the county, whether that's financial information, whether that's non-financial information. So that you have a good holistic picture of county performance to make meaningful data-driven decisions. And then last, the communication to reporting. So now that we have all that information, how can we use it to educate residents on initiatives that the county is undertaking in progress? And that also allow residents to provide their input. And then we'll transition. So that'll be kind of like the first half of the presentation here. The second half will be the actual backbone of the system. So the financial management system, the accounting system, where staff are able to keep track of all the debt and credits and the finances throughout the county. And really how we can streamline a lot of those operations, help staff be more efficient, and then also accommodate different initiatives to be paperless. Any questions on that so far?
No, sir.
Great. I'll give the, just for those who are unfamiliar with OpenGov, I'll give like the two to three-minute intro to who we are and our government expertise. Really quickly, we were founded in 2012, headquartered in Redwood City, California, with the mission to power more effective and accountable government.
Andrew.
And so with that, our entire company was built from the ground up with local government in mind. We're not an offshoot of an enterprise company that's trying to carve out a government business. Really since the beginning, our main goal is to be innovation leaders in the local government technology space. And so with that, a lot of our team actually comes from careers in local government. You know, we've evidenced Mark Welch being on the line here, former administrative services director in Ashland. Karen is also a city manager herself, but even a lot of our founding team came from careers in local government. And really what they noticed was that generally in the world, there's a whole lot of technology innovation going on. But a lot of that pattern really leaked into local government. And anything that did was focused on the really large cities, the really large counties throughout the country, and not so much focused on, you know, local governments that were small to midsize. And so that became kind of the rallying cry for our founding team and for the company as a whole was how can we create software that can help governments run more efficiently, run more effectively, and better communicate with their residents? And so we've grown pretty rapidly. So we're up to about 2,200 customers nationwide, about 10 to 15 in the state of Oregon. You'll notice several logos here. So the city of Ashland, Independence, Ontario, Astoria, Sherwood, just to name a few. As far as the results, I'll just touch on these really quickly before we actually get into the depth involved in the demonstration. You know, a really good example and, you know, winds up pretty closely with, you know, a lot of the goals that we've discussed with the Curry County team with Ashland. I'll let Mark tell the story a little bit as he gets into it. But really the ability to streamline their operations for budget and finance, and then execute against a strategic plan and to share the results out to residents. You know, Mark did a great job there. And we see this being kind of the key tenet of OpenGov and the ability for governments to really automate and streamline a lot of these processes. You know, as far as the strategic planning and budgeting side, we'll regularly see governments are better able to plan and track their budgets. So we'll see, you know, reallocation and, you know, better optimizing of public spend. You know, on the reporting and internal communication side, regularly anywhere from 50% to 90% time savings and being able to do a lot of their reporting and analysis, also helping with things like trend analysis and future planning. And then on the public side, the ability for residents to be better involved and better educated on the initiatives that are ongoing throughout the community. Any questions on the OpenGov background or expertise before we pass it over to Mark?
None that I see.
I just have one question. How many counties in Oregon are you currently serving?
Yeah, really good question. So at the moment, just one, so Plymouth County, Oregon. There are a couple others that are going to be coming up shortly, which I won't disclose. But yeah, we're growing our presence in order pretty rapidly.
Which county is that? What was it?
Uh, Plymouth.
Plymouth, okay. Sorry about that.
Yep. Yeah, if there's no other questions, I'll pass it over to Mark to actually get into the demonstration. You know, as mentioned, this is meant to be a high-level overview. But if there are any specific questions that you have, please feel free to stop and guide us on anything that you'd like to do.
Thank you.
All right, can everyone see my screen? It says the city of Winchester?
Yes.
Awesome. So what I was planning to do is start on some external examples, so some communication that you can have with your public. Everything I'm going to show you, you can keep private as well. So you don't have to share all this if you don't want it. You can do this all internally. You can print all of these websites out as well. So what we're seeing the tool really being used for is a lot of analysis, a lot of bringing in data. So we bring in all the financial data. We have a lot of non-financial information within OpenGov. And we're able to report on that. But more importantly, we have it for our internal usage. But we also can share that out with our residents. So what we're looking at here is actually the city of Winchester. They did a strategic plan progress using OpenGov. So you come to this website. This is how they communicated from an internal staff perspective to their city council, as well as their residents. You can come in, you can see, you know, this is a strategic plan progress. They list each one of their goals. So you can see they have economic growth, some information regards to that. Come down, promote it, and accelerate revitalization. But what you can do, because all the data lives within OpenGov reporting, you can come in, drill down more into this economic growth. And now we can start to report on how we're performing. So we can report on how we're performing financially, you know, trends that we're seeing in revenue and expenses. But then we're also able to put some of these key performance measures that we have, that these are all coming from OpenGov, where we can track and see our performance. And so really useful in terms of being able to communicate out a lot of financial and non-financial information. And all of these reports, I can actually click on them. So numbers of net new business. And when I select one of these tiles, this quick snapshot, it's going to guide me into the report for more information. So I went from the external, where I was looking at the report, I had wanted more information. I'm able to drive in and get that details. Another example of how the tool's being used is around educating the residents about your budget. So kind of a quick snapshot of how the budget is performing. This is the city of Elk Grove. They did a budget fact sheet for last year. You can create a video. This is their assistant city manager doing a video about the budget. Some basic information to try and educate the residents on the budget. Where's the money coming from? What are our major expenditures? And by department, by our categories, a breakdown of our property tax dollars. But then what Elk Grove did was they said, you know, we want to educate our residents. So we want to push information to them. But we also want to engage with them and have them be able to have the access to provide information back to us. So they could put this survey in where you can now engage with your community. So this is a budget challenge where residents can come in. They can select how much they would allocate out of $100 to each of these major categories. And then you can report on the performance and see, you know, get a kind of gauge of where your community is at. You can do it in this type of format. But we can also do surveys where you can just have, you know, what are your priorities? And they just come in and select what they want. And then you're able to report on it. We can break it down by just different districts, you know, male, female, different demographics, to see how everyone was voting and get some information back from the community. So not only are we pushing information, educating them, being very transparent on our finances, as well as our performance, but we're also able to engage and receive feedback back from the community. I wanted to show this example. I really like what the city of Olympia is doing. So the city of Olympia, you know, up there in Washington, south of Tacoma, is a customer of OpenGov. They created this. This is another performance report that they created to share to the community around their strategic plan. So they have a calendar of the different dates on how this strategic plan was accomplished. So really easy to develop these pages. They have different videos in the tool. But you can come down here and they have three major goals. So walkability, public safety, and homelessness. Homelessness is a big issue for them. And you can drive into any of these major goals for the city. And it's going to give you information on how they're actually performing. So you can see here, here's how they're addressing homelessness. But they put this report within OpenGov of the unsanctioned data. So you're able to come in, see their accounts based on, you know, their going out and their outreach to see the tests within the city. So really useful to communicate a lot of performance measures and different financial information. I wanted to show you another way the tool's being used. And I made this. You can see we're, I'm going internally now. So you can see this ribbon bar. And we received some data around how you guys were traditionally seeing financial report out of your financial system. And we wanted to show you, you know, an example of how we could take that data, which is pretty stale table, really hard to understand, and make a story, make a little, make a little report that's really easy to understand for everybody. So this is, yeah, the sheriff example. And so we can come down, we can put in, you know, the picture of the sheriff, some basic information, description around them. But what I want to show you is we can now put in your expenses within this story. And so you don't have to look at a sheet of numbers and tables. And, you know, it's pretty confusing. As a finance guy, I have a hard time looking at those as well. But we can put that into this format where you can easily see the graphs, or see how we're performing by month. We can see our budget all in one place. Maybe there's different categories that we want to look at. So salaries, we can see how we're performing on salaries and as well as our overtime. We can pick different categories that we want to focus on. And we can create these little stories, tiles, where you can see how you're performing. We can also bring in the revenue, as well as that same table that you saw before. I'm sorry, I scrolled a little too far. So now you have that same table that you had before. You have all that data listed. So we know our period actuals, our year-to-date actuals, what our budget was, how much of the budget we have left. In kind of a more easier read format. So we can create these templates. And so all the departments can come in, update their narrative as you go. You know, if overtime's a focus, we can come in and have, you know, the sheriff update the narrative. The tiles are going to be updated. And since we have the integration of the financial system, it's all going to be real-time. And then we can just create the narrative, make it really easy to read format, and really focus on the needs of your residents, as well as your board, on information that you want to receive. Are there any questions? Eric, so how we can set up different reports and communicate different information?
I'm not hearing any from the group yet.
Okay. I'm just going to show one more example of an external site. And this is the city of Ashland. So this is our traditional transparency site. And this is where you can come in and really dive into the numbers. You don't have to know the account strings. You don't have to know anything other than, you know, generally, you know, where things live. So this is the city of Ashland's public-facing site. And this is so residents can come in. It goes back to 2006, all the way up to the current year. You can see all of our tables have plain English around them. So we have personnel service, M&amp;S, debt service, capo LA. So, you know, what you would traditionally see in an Oregon budget book. And you can go from here and just quickly dive into the information you want. You know, I use this tool exclusively for all my analysis with Ashland. I know my community liked it. Because they can come in here, let's say we wanted to look at fire overtime. You know, we're kind of curious on how that's performing. All we have to do is with clicks, we can select personnel services. And it's going to break us down into two major categories of personnel services. We know overtime is in salary and wages. Another click, now I'm looking at everything in my salary and wages. I have a graph up top, but I also have a table view down below of all the different categories that are in our salaries. I can select overtime. And with, you know, three clicks, I'm now looking at the citywide overtime spend. And so I can see the trends for the whole city. Let's say that's not what interests me. I can come here on these filter bars. And I can say, you know what? I wanted to see that by department, right? We wanted to see the fire department. So I came in, I switched into departments. Now I broke that overtime major category across the city. Now I'm looking at my overtime by each of my departments. And then I can drive in deeper. So fires and public safety. And I can come in, and now I have police and fire. I can select my police, my fire department. And now I see my overtime spend for the fire department. So in a matter of about six clicks, I was able to get down to the lowest level of my chart of accounts with all those summary tables as I went in, which is, you know, a pretty hard task in any financial system.
So one question I have.
Commissioner Pash has a question for you.
Hello?
Yep.
Yeah, my question, it's not really a question. It's more, I just would like to verify that every one of our departments will have all this information at their fingertips anytime they want to. And it will also be coordinated through the finance H&R. All departments will have access to this information.
Correct. Yep. Departments will have access to it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Before we go on to it, I just wanted to highlight, Cheryl, you mentioned you had a question actually today, you know, with the current system. And you mentioned trouble getting a report of like revenues across several years.
Yeah, I wanted to know revenues by source over years. Revenues by source over years.
Yeah, so I think we showed you, you know, I sent over an example, Mark, actually just to explain exactly. You know, basically, it's that, you know, a couple of clicks here. You know, you can see, we can track all the different revenue types, or the revenue sources and where they're coming from. And then of course, if you wanted to drill down into more detail or filter where you're only looking at certain years, you know, it's all interactive and really built to be user-friendly. Not just for someone who's an expert in, you know, writing code or writing queries, but, you know, for anyone who can just point and click and are looking for certain information.
I think it's beautiful.
Commissioner Gold has a question.
So I have a question. How hard, I know these are beautiful graphs and all of that, but how hard is it for the user to put in the information that is going to be used for these graphs?
Yeah, it's actually seamless. So we integrate it into the financial system. So we have a direct connection. So it's all live. That's 100% hands-off for any of the performance measures. We can integrate it into any financial, or any system that has an export into CSV files, so an Excel format. Or if it's be kept in Excel format, it's as easy as dragging and dropping the data into our system, and then it's there. So really quick to get the data in.
Okay.
I, excuse me, I thought...
We have another question from the back.
She might need a microphone. You're going to need a microphone. Hold on.
No. No, they have to shut off. I thought from our, this is Sina. I thought from our previous session that the financial information would be directly input from each department and not going through a spreadsheet and into the system.
So we were looking at the STW integration that you guys provided. And it just confused the group a little bit when you said about dropping it from Excel.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And I said, bringing it from Excel. And then if there was some performance measures, you know, maybe the sheriff is tracking things in Excel format or other systems. You can bring it from Excel into the system. The financial side is 100% integrated in STW. And so as STW is updated, you're going to see those updated results in OpenGov. No Excel use, it's 100% automated. You don't touch it. We're, we're pulled the data is from OpenGov into the system.
Who's our, they are? You turn them on?
Good job, Eric.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so each department would be entering their financial information as it comes in, so that they would have an updated to-the-minute financial report at any time? Is this what I'm understanding?
It's updated.
Overnight.
Yeah, yes.
Overnight.
So it's updated as new information is put into, into the financial system.
It has to batch overnight though, right?
Batch overnight, yeah. Which is usually when you close your batches anyways.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to wait a month for our financials? We would be able to see them instantaneously?
Yeah, every morning, when you come into the office, it'd be the most updated.
Okay, and, but the big hitch would be that the departments enter that information in a timely manner? Would that be the biggest problem?
The departments would be entering. And they would just, like in those stories, like back here, you know, when we were looking at this. The sheriff would come in and just update narrative for this report. This information, which is coming from the financial system, that's updated automatically for you. So as new information is brought in, all of the reports are going to be updated for you. It's just the narrative that would be updated by department.
And what happens currently is we do a long-hand invoice, correct? And then it goes to a department head and then goes to financial versus just putting it into the computer and it's already there. Time-saving.
I've got, yeah, I was kind of going there. Are there checks and balances on this? I mean, a department could enter anything. And how do we know that it's...
Is the AP at the third point of your agenda? Is that what you're going to cover for them then? That's where most of our questions are coming from right now.
Yeah. So we are focusing just right now on the external, like how do you report back on data? And how we can set up reports? And how you have quick analysis of your financial information? You know, everyone's going to have it at their fingertips. And then we're going to jump into STW.
Thank you.
So I have a question before you go off the slide. My name is Julie. So we do have the district attorney sitting here. So, um, we do have the district attorney sitting here. So for example, something, if he has an Excel chart of ages of his offenders or something, he could just insert that data and it would pop up in a graph like this, right?
Exactly, yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so, so, so Mark, really quickly, just show, I guess, like the internal dashboard view just to give you an idea of like what, what staff would be able to see and how they'd be able to track their own performance.
Yeah, let me, um, quickly switch over to, I mean, internal. So what you're looking at right now is our internal, um, site. So this is the OpenGov cloud, different sections. I think the reports are down here in stories. That's where we were, you know, showed you those stories, how you can communicate out. I'm going to jump up to reports. So we can have unlimited reports. Every department can have their own report that they want. We can make them private if we want. Um, but what I want to show you is we can set up dashboards. And we can have unlimited dashboards, so everything within OpenGov is unlimited usage. We want you to really use the tool. We want everybody in the tool. And so we can set these up where, you know, county administrator has their own dashboard, finance has their own dashboard, commissioners can have their own dashboard. You know, everyone wants to track different things. But what we can do is jump into this county administrator dashboard. And this is where we're going to track that information just quickly. You know, we like to think you come into the office, you're having your coffee, um, quickly jump in and see how you're performing around some financial information. So here's our general government budget to actuals, we're tracking salary and benefits. But here's where we would track those performance measures, those different metrics that we wanted to look at. Um, so children in need of protection, we have that in the tile. Uh, we can go down and see adult felonies, uh, what is our account, opiate calls per year. And, and so we can put all of these into what we call a dashboard, right? Quick access to, um, the underlying data behind all of these is the reports. And so if I jump into opiate calls per year, it's going to drive you into more information in regards to that. So right now I can see, you know, the report in regards to that, that data.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but, yeah, if you can imagine here, I know each department head might have their four or five reports that they're tracking. Um, you might have a commissioner's report, um, and those can all be set up. And these are pulled directly out of the accounting system on a monthly basis. They're always fresh, they're always updated.
Great, thank you.
I guess my only concern is that people are responsible enough departments to enter this data right away so we can keep up to date.
That'll be done internally though.
Yeah, but it's, it's got to be done, otherwise it's useless. Maybe I'm crazy, but thanks.
Yeah, so I think, um, before we go into the, the backend accounting system, uh, we're allowed to be pulled from, um, Mark, just want to show the, uh, the budgets and how you can help strategically budget and plan.
Yeah, we'll, we'll quickly show you how we can, uh, we can budget and strategic, and tie this to your strategic plan or goals of the county. So this is where our departments would come in and actually enter their budget. Um, you know, we're down here in budgets now. We set it up, right now I'm looking at what, you know, an administrator would see. So I'm seeing everything, departments only see what they have access to. But you see some graphics up top of how your, your budget's going. I'm going to jump into this public safety proposal. It's going to give some free form narrative, so as departments are building their, their budget and justifications, uh, they can give that narrative. We're able to add supporting documents into our system. And so, you know, I don't know how you guys are, um, really hard, all the handouts and justification around budget requests, we're able to put those in one place, um, so you have quick access to them. When we're departments enter their budget is when we call expenses, they come down, enter into their worksheet. So I just opened up a worksheet and this is where your departments come in. They have, you know, plain English around what they're looking at. They have all the reference years that they want to see. So this is really the only place they have to go, um, to enter their budget. They don't need to use Excel anymore. It's all here, they come in, put the number of what they're requesting, and then they can add justification. So we, you know, we need a thousand dollars more, uh, because the cost of... We're also able to provide even more justification around all of our, our items. So we, you know, call these itemizations on each of the accounts. So we can break down postage, instead of just a global change on the whole account, we can break down what's within that and we're going to total it up for you. So, you know, we need four hundred dollars for staples, a thousand dollars for daily payment. And so we get down to really, really detailed information within the budget process. We can also report on all of this as well. So as you're going through the review process, you have access into this to see what the requests were. And ongoing departments, um, commissioners, and, and the administrators, you guys all have access in to come in and monitor and, and really track the budget throughout the year. You can also tie this to any of the initiatives you have, so any goals, uh, in the county. We can start to then budget around them. And so I'm just going to open this up and show you, you know, we, we can match any goals, um, department goals, and, and then we can budget towards those goals. So we can show how much we're putting financially towards our goals, you know, and then vice versa. We can then show our performance and, and how we're actually doing, uh, with that money. You know, maybe we're spending a lot on a specific goal. We can show the community that we did spend that money. And then we can correspond and show them the performance and, and all those metrics on how we actually ended up performing.
I've got another question. I'm always loaded with questions. Um, I think it would be helpful for departments to know what their past budget was in order to predict what their future budget is going to be. So my question is, how hard would it be to input all past budget information into this program?
Yeah, really easy. So that's what these columns are, is your past budget's amounts. So you, you, we, we can pull all the data, so we have it all, we'll bring in, you know, at least 10 years of history, um, on all these accounts as well as all the budget amounts, um, that you guys have. And then you just select what you want to show here.
So question, are they, are they going to have to input each...
You can add the descriptions that you have from last year. We can add those in so that when departments come in, they can see what they actually budgeted last year.
It's part of the conversion.
Oh, so there's an easy way to convert the whole thing?
Why deployment cost is so high?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sounds like there are the, the more, the more questions or a follow on question on that?
I'm just wondering how easy it is to input all of this information, the past information. And I was told that, I guess, you guys do it, but I'm sure there would be a cost to that, correct?
No, yeah, that, we would do that and that's based on just our implementation. So that's a standard, uh, thing that we do for all of our customers.
I have a question. Do we know how much this is going to cost compared to what we currently use? Is it a yearly cost or is it...
Need to be at a microphone, sorry.
This is about a DA, this is more to the commissioners, just that if we know how much this is going to cost compared to what we're currently paying in, is it a yearly?
Yes, it is. There's an implementation cost and then an annual cost as well that we've already got information on.
Does the annual cost change?
Basically not right now, no.
I have it locked in, so that they, they guaranteed us a cost of living cap.
If we can move, move forward, it'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, all right. I just want to show you two other things. So what we also do, and I won't, I won't jump into that, we can also calculate all your workforce, all the people costs, and, and start to model that. What you get with being able to do it all within OpenGov is then you have the access to do all the reports within OpenGov as well. So here's our proposed budget, we're able to put in all the years of actuals that we want to, to show. And then we can show each of the phases of our budget. So in this report, I have a, you know, five years of actuals, last year's budget, I'm showing what my departments enter, and then I'm showing what the, uh, budget officer, proposed budget is. And we can start to add those, you know, what did budget committee change? And then we can show the final, uh, city council adopted. Then she still have that same report functionality where you can quickly dissect and analyze the data and see trends, um, in here. And then just real quick, we also can do the same thing on your workforce. So as we're calculating, you know, your salary, benefits, role positions, we can start to model some changes. And so here is just two examples. This is my current workforce, what I'm putting into the budget. And then I have a scenario that changes some things. And then I can report on it and, and show, you know, if I open up benefits, I can see, you know, what are the changes between each of those scenarios? And then I can even take that a step further and break, break my scenario down by funds. And so I can come in here and say, you know, I just want to see the impact on my general fund. I'm able to select that and now I'm looking at, you know, all these changes we made in workforce proposals that we were looking at. I just changed that and now I'm able to see the true impact just to the general fund.
Okay, great.
So any, any questions on, you know, kind of the output, I guess, of the system here before we, before we actually jump into the backend accounting system?
I have a question, this is Julie. So my understanding is that there, this can also be used for, um, code enforcement programs such as land use code enforcement or building safety permit data, planning permit data, business licenses, things of that. Do you have some examples of what that would look like?
Good question. Um, Mark or Karen, did we, did we compare with any of those? I'm going to send those out here.
Uh, I don't either.
Okay. Yeah, well, let's, um, I'll, I'll make a note to, to follow up with some examples of that. Um, see to the building, code enforcement.
How about tax assessor also? Because they're going to be...
The tax assessor?
Yes, they're going to be putting out a lot of money for software.
Yeah, yeah, so I know we spoke a little bit with, uh, I believe Jim, Jim Colan?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, so I think we spoke a little bit about it. Um, so, you know, we don't have a, the tool that's focused specifically on tax collection. Um, we do have some functionalities that, that can be used for it. Um, Karen, more of the expert on this side, but, um, you know, basically configuring, uh, our billing pollution to help you, uh, do that process. But, you know, it's not a, it's not purpose built for tax collection.
This is the other Julie, I have a question. When, um, when the other Julie was asking about code enforcement information and building permits and stuff, if that's not part of the finance software, that's the type of information that would get uploaded from an Excel spreadsheet or something? Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so only the information that's, that's in the financial package is what's automatically going to come on those graphs? Any additional stuff has to be uploaded?
That's right. Unless we get it in automated integration, it's Essela, right, that you're currently using for that type of information?
Right. Okay, thank you. So there's no way to take the Essela data and, um, transfer it into the system? We'd have to enter all that manually?
No, there's an integration.
We can, we can integrate into Essela data, uh, it, it's just up to you guys how you want that, that to work.
Okay.
So we could do a direct integration where, you know, you're sending the data out of Essela to us, um, through an FTP site, a secure FTP site or automated. Uh, it's, it's really, you know, what works best is this information you want updated all the time or, or, you know, what, what cadence do you want that? And we would work with you guys in a, an integration team that would look at what's the best option for that.
Also, is there an extra charge for that?
Well, that's, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think that's all the questions we have.
Okay. Great, yeah, so, you know, what I, what I hope came through and, you know, quick speaking with the team, you know, we heard, um, you know, reporting, um, you know, for department heads, for management, for commissioners, you know, it was very time consuming, um, you know, it's hard to keep track, um, and to have information readily available at, at everyone's fingertips. So I hope that came through on the first part, um, you know, also how you can tie this to the strategic plan. You know, I know you've been working with Moss Adams and developing like a five to 10 year plan, um, have to use this to help you, um, to track and to share information, you know, related to the plan. Um, Karen, I'll, I'll pass it over to you to go into the backend accounting system.
Sure, thank you, Andrew and Mark. Let's see if I can share my screen with everyone. Okay, can everyone see my desktop screen?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And yeah, before we go in, um, you know, as you're pulling this up, I'll just set the stage a little bit here too. Um, so for those who are unaware, um, you know, we, earlier, at the beginning of the year, we acquired, uh, an accounting system called STW. And for the last year, we've been integrating it directly into the rest of OpenGov platforms and solutions. Um, so you'll, you'll notice the, uh, the large STW logo right there. Um, you know, worth noting by January 1, um, this will all be OpenGov branded and it'll have the same looking deal as OpenGov. So that'll, that'll be going live in January.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be speaking with you tonight about our platform. Um, I have used the STW software and the OpenGov products, um, in my career and I really, really love them. The flexibility and ease of use is fantastic. In addition to that, the integration is, is superb. Um, the nice thing about the system is that in all of the application modules, they talk to one another. So you don't have to rekey, um, processes. So I heard the question earlier, um, there was concern over department heads having to enter in all this information. Um, that's how the system works is that operationally, you're still going to continue the same day-to-day processes that you have. You're going to do, um, take cash receipts, you're going to process accounts payable, you're going to create payroll. And as the various staff members are doing those functions, it will automatically at night integrate that financial data into, um, the areas that you just saw, um, updating all of those templates that you have created. So that is just one example of how, um, flexible the system is. Because you can create any report template or dashboard that you would like and the system will help you repopulate that financial information. So I hope that that, uh, brought a little bit of clarity and I think as I show you the various modules, you're going to be able to, um, understand more. So with that being said, um, if, please let me know during the presentation, if you are not seeing, uh, something or if you have any questions, please let me know. So let's just dive right in.
Karen?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure when you're covering this, one thing I'd like to have you explain to the group is the opportunity for purchase cards as opposed to credit cards?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
So right now I am in our general ledger master menu and in our system across the whole platform, we believe in fostering communication and accountability, being able to understand your data. Uh, and the system really helps to foster that communication both internally and externally. So if we go into, um, a summary inquiry screen, you're able to view a particular account and all of its related details. Uh, so if I go in and I put in a general ledger account number and, um, bring up the information, I'm going to see a summary of each month's data. Uh, the first column is the amended budget, then I have my year-to-date actual amounts, I have any encumbrances, I have the budget balance and the period balance. Having all of this information at your fingertips and being able to drill down into it is very important. If I wanted to look at another year, I would just simply type in the prior, any year that I wanted to look at and I would see that year's data. Uh, and I could also drill down into it. Um, like what Mark was saying earlier, we just don't bring forward your balances, we bring forward all of your transactional data and budgets. And so that information is really very valuable to you because right away, you reap the benefits of being able to see trend analysis from your, your day-to-day processes. If I am to right mouse click on the budget, I can go in and I can see further details. Um, I could see, um, if these had various line items that people could look at. And this particular budget, um, I'm in the wrong year, so let me set it back to the right year so that you can see the detail. That budget only had one line item. But in 2019, you can see that the original budget was 99,000 and in April, there was an amendment to the budget. Uh, so if I go in, I can see these details. And I can see the various categories, um, that, uh, was budgeted for and appropriated for and... And I can see the various categories that was budgeted for and appropriated for, and where they're stand at this current point in time. I can see the adopted budget, the amended budget, year-to-date actuals, any encumbrances, and the remaining balance. And if I decide to drill down into a month, I'm going to see all of the transactional data. So I'm currently in the month of March, and I can see every single line item that hit this account. If I wanted to download this information, I would not have to go out and elsewhere in the system and run a report, I could just hit my Excel button, and it would migrate all of the data for me to a worksheet. And that is a huge convenience.
Hold please.
In our system... Pardon?
Question, please.
No, Karen, this, this is the other Julie again. So this information is only going to be available to those people that are using the financial system itself, right? This isn't just...
No. Yeah, it's department.
So is it...
Correct.
Okay, so...
Do you mean the public?
No, I mean other departments.
She was asking if the departments will have access to this for their own departments.
Um, yes, that's another nice thing about the system. You can give, you can give access to anyone, and you can restrict access to anyone.
Okay, thank you.
So for example, if you want the sheriff's department to only see their accounts and their budget, their funds, you can let them see only their information, and they will not be able to see anybody else's. But again, that flexibility is up to you, and you can change that at any time. There's over 9,000 screens in the system, and you can literally restrict access to each of those screens.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The other thing about our system is that anything in red means that a document is attached. So for example, in this column, the vendor column, you would be able to see vendor documents if I simply clicked on it. Can you see that there is an ACH form and a W9 form that's scanned in?
Yes.
Okay, and that is very nice, because all of the information is at, you know, people's fingertips. The other nice thing is you can restrict access to these documents. So again, if you have a clerk or an employee that you don't want to be able to access these, you can do that. Again, all of that flexibility and internal control is whatever you decide to set it at. So same thing with the invoices, you can scan in all of your invoices. The file types, we can handle different types. So if you also want to attach, let's say, an Excel spreadsheet, or a Word document, a PowerPoint, pictures, again, the world is your, your oyster, so to speak. And it's nice being able to see this level of data, no matter what period or year you go back to. Having all of this transactional detail is, is just priceless. Now, there is some other views...
More baskets, huh?
That people absolutely love, especially the department heads love about our system. You can see that type of view that we were just looking at by fund, you can also see it by department. So in one place, a department could go in here and see that type, their activity. And again, you can make it, set the security so that they see only what you want them to see, and can access only what you want them to access. So basically, they, I don't have any data in this period, but if I go back to September, I can see the total budget, where I'm at year-to-date, and the remaining balance, line item by line item. And if I drill down into this information, I go right back to that summary screen that I was showing you. And that is really a nice feature.
We have a question?
Um, is, is it possible for outsiders to come in and change information, or is it only department heads that have access to inputting information, or would we have control over that?
You have control over it, you don't have to change your daily processes. This is your system that, in your internal staff, use internally to process all of your transactions.
Yeah, you were asking about, like, members of the public, is that right?
Well, public or even outside a department, I just want to make sure that there's enough control to make it all above board.
Oh, absolutely. The public cannot get into this.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that's a great question, right? You don't want to have, you know, even different departments sometimes going in and looking at every little thing that another department's doing. And so that's, you know, all the view rights can be set up in here, so, you know, you might have only accounting who's coming in and looking at all the details. And then, you know, for the public facing reports, that would be more so like the Ashland reports that Mark showed you, you know, that would be put out in a more user-friendly way, so they're not, again, having to, to run, you know, search queries or anything like that.
So if I get the graphs, okay.
So I have a, I have a question, you know, sometimes you have, I'm just going to blame this on commissioners, even though they've never done this, but let's say commissioner's looking at something, and they just move their finger wrong, and is it possible that they could be changing the data in there by just, without even knowing it?
No.
Okay.
No, because what you would do is you would give your department head or commissioner view only, maybe they can view only, look at the documents, print reports. Again, you set the control levels for each individual person.
I think that addresses the concern.
Yeah, it is.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Right now, I am currently looking at the general fund and the police department, and I wanted to be able to show you something else, of just how integrated the system is. If I drill down as an department head, and I wanted to look at my printing and binding, and I went in to a particular month, I'm like, man, my expenses are high. I can actually take a look at the activity. So if I clicked on a particular line item, and I went in and I said, okay, I want to view this activity, I can actually go directly into the AP system and view all of the details regarding this invoice. I can look at the documents, I can look at the check, I can view the check, and I can actually email, and all of our applications, you can email various people if you need to, and you can also send them files with that email. So again, everything is at the touch of your fingertips to take a look at your activity and see what's going on. Does that make sense to everyone, being able to drill down and see their activity?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, I know this was one of the questions too, from the, from the staff with the whole AP process. Did this cover everything that you wanted to do?
She's coming up to the mic.
Wow, that was...
Yes.
This is Sina again. This is, I'm understanding it just to be inquiry only. Where is the actual data entry?
The data entry occurs in all of the various modules, and they actually feed into the general ledger. So for example, if you process payroll or an accounts payable run, that application creates the journal entry and sends it over to this general ledger module. Staff are, is also able to go in and do manual journal entries, where they actually key in a journal entry. You can also, for reoccurring items, you can also create templates that will automatically upload the, the journal entry for you. So it's all integrated, and so that as processes occur, the journal entries are created and migrated to the general ledger. The general ledger is the heart of the system.
Okay, I have a...
Everything else into it.
I have a question, so can a department head do his journal entries and then send them over to finance for approval before they're actually loaded in? So that, you know, something improper isn't loaded?
Yes. So all of the journal entries that come over, we recommend that a supervisor reviews them. So, you know, and oftentimes, that happens in various locations throughout the system, where you can actually view the journal entry that was created. For example, if you're working in cash receipts or accounts payable, you can view the journal entry. Again, wherever you want to put those controls in place for the review is up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Does the data, does the data entry come from individual dashboard site?
No, the data entry, your staff does the data entry. So whoever is currently processing your accounts payable would process accounts payable in the system.
Okay, I'll give you an example of what's currently happening. We have each department, and we've got dozens of departments.
We've got Sina, our AP clerk, talking to you.
Each one of the departments receives their bills, and they create a paper claim that goes with that bill. It goes to the supervisor, it is signed off as authorized, and then it comes over into accounts payable office to me. I take the same paperwork, enter the GL number and description into the accounting system, and then stamp the, the claim form, and then the whole stack for the week goes to my supervisor, who goes through and reviews it and manually signs off on them. And then I run a report and verify that the total of all of those claims equal the total on the report, and then that basket goes to a commissioner, and the commissioner goes through and reviews them all and signs off on the report. And then it comes back to me to select the invoices for payment and create the check. So what, what steps would be deleted going with this company?
Well, we can automate that, but you, first off, the first part of the question is, you can have people in different departments entering in their information. Again, you control that, you determine who enters in the information. We have the claim listing reports, we also have the voucher sheets in the system, so that those can be printed off. You can also, if you want it to automate, again, you can scan in all the invoices, and you can actually route them through the PO system. The nice thing about the PO system is you don't have to use it to issue POs, you use it as an internal communication tool, because now the commissioners or whoever you want can actually go in, look at the documents, look at the invoice, and give an electronic approval. You can have up to six approval levels in the AP system. So, and I'll show you the AP system, right now, we're, we're looking at the general ledger, but I can show you that information when we go over there.
Okay, sorry to jump the gun.
Oh, no, no. Hey, it's a great question. And, you know, like I was saying, the general ledger is the heart of the system. If you remember in the beginning, Andrew showed you a daisy wheel, the general ledger was in the center, it's almost like a wagon wheel, and all of the other applications talk to the general ledger and send the general ledger the necessary activity that it needs. And, and then all of the department heads can view, or whoever you grant access to, can view the activity.
Okay, one more question?
Sure.
Hello, Carolyn, my name is John, I'm administrative assistant, so I am entering the data. What if I enter an incorrect general ledger number?
You don't enter the numbers there.
Well, if you enter in an incorrect general ledger number, A number one, if it's, if you miskeyed something and the number isn't at all in the system, it's going to give you an error message. But let's say that you accidentally keyed the wrong account number, that can be gone in and changed at any time before you pay it. If unfortunately, you have paid it, you can always do a manual journal entry to reclassify it to the, to the proper expense line. Does that make sense?
Yes, however, who discovers it's the wrong number?
Again, it's whoever you have doing the review process. You're going to be able to see in the, in the inquiry screens, like we're looking at now, if something looks out of line to you, like I said, you can drill down into each of these line items and look at your activity. So if all of a sudden you're in salaries, and you see an expenditure in there for printing and binding, you're going to go, hey, that doesn't belong there. And so then, the proper person can take care of that and move it to the proper line item.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody have any more questions over the general ledger before I go on to the other modules?
Looks like not.
Okay, thank you. So let me dive into accounts payable, since we had questions there. And I want you to pretend like you are standing at the file cabinet of where all of your vendor files are. And if I click on the vendor information area, I can see basically a file folder for each vendor. And in our system, we have color-coded legends, so that people can visually quickly recognize certain pieces of information. If you notice in the vendor column, some items are in yellow, and what that means is that this particular vendor is paid via an ACH or wire. Anything in red, again, is documents. Anything in purple means that there's comments on this vendor, so you might want to take note when you go in there and look at those comments. Anything in red means that this vendor right now is not accepting transactions. The nice thing about this is that you don't have to keep on recreating vendors. So let's say you used this vendor during 2016, you had no activity for a couple of years, and then suddenly they had the good pricing again, you started to utilize them in 2019. You would just go in and simply flag them back to being active, and you could go on. And that is actually very great, because now, again, you're able to see all of your lineage of activity. So let me go into a vendor so that I can show you this. Again, we like every application to have an area where it's a one-stop shop. You can access all of the activity in one place, so that you're not inconvenienced by going out of the system. So if I go into 3M library systems, and I want to take a look at their invoices, I can see all of their invoices, I can drill down into them. Again, I can go back to prior years and, and look at all of that activity. If I wanted to take a look at, let's say, lineages of activity, I can go in and I can look at their purchases by year, and I can see that we've, you know, been... And I can see that we've, you know, been purchasing since 2012. Four invoices totaling $6,390. So all of that information is, is there for you to see. If it's a 1099 vendor, you can see that activity as well. The other nice feature in our system that is unique is you can actually copy invoices. So if you have a regular reoccurring invoice, you can just right mouse-click on it, copy. Let's say it's a monthly electric bill and all that you would have to key in is just update the, the amounts. Everything else would be there for you. So does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay, great. Again, in this module, you can go in, you're able to email, again, whoever you would like to be able to view this information, again, you would be able to control the access of that. This would be the module where all of your invoices would be processed. If you wanted to automate the process like I was talking about earlier, you could go in and various department heads or clerks, again, whoever you assign, could create a PO and electronically route the information for you to see. You could go in and look at all the details. Again, you could have up to six levels of approval. You could look at the documents. So again, you can do it completely manually, the way that you are printing off the reports and the paper and having the, the signatures and all of that, or you can automate some of your processes. Again, that control lies with you. The other nice thing about our system is that it allows time-saving in the AP module for your staff. Because in our system, you can have two different physical year batches open. So let's say that, I don't know, your year entered December 31st and a new year starts January the 1st. I could have, and here it is, you know, the end of February, but I have invoices that, that are for the prior year. I can have a batch open for the prior year and a batch open for the current year. Process my invoices the same way that I always do, but they would be recognized and booked in the general ledger in the proper year. And that saves staff the time from having to do all of those manual accruals to get ready for the annual audit. The other nice thing about the system is that you do have the ability to process a quick check. So let's say, you know, something accidentally didn't get processed or you have an emergency, the system can very quickly create a check for you. The other thing that is built into our AP system is the 1099 reporting. You do not have to buy a separate software to do that. We update that annually for you so that it meets the IRS regulations. And again, it's very easy to process for staff. So does anybody have any other questions about the accounts payable system?
I just have a quickie here. I don't know, do we have particular software that generates the 1099s now? That we have to pay for?
No.
Okay, just curious. Thanks.
No more questions.
Okay, great. Now, again, I want you guys to realize that this account payable module, for each process that you do, whether you're accruing the invoices or whether you're actually doing a check run, it automatically integrates with the general ledger system. And you wanted to talk about your purchase cards. Purchase cards are also integrated with the accounts payable system. And P cards allow you to manage your employee credit cards. And let's go in and take a look at that. So we work with you and your bank to build the interface template so that you can manage each one of your users. Back here, sorry about that. Right here is where you would import your purchase card information from the banks. And we, again, like I said, would build this interface with you and your bank. At the bank, the template would contain the different expense object codes so that as your employees went in and updated the bank with their purchase information, that information would automatically migrate so that somebody internally at the county would look and review each one of those transactions. When they were satisfied that everything was correct and made all the necessary corrections, it would then, again, interface with accounts payable and with the general ledger, updating both of the modules with all of the information. For your individual users at the county, you can set up various levels. You could have Sandy at a $500 level and maybe June at, you know, 200. Again, all of that flexibility lies with you and how you want to manage it. Are there any questions about that process? Is that what you wanted to see, Sherilyn?
Yes, thank you. Any more questions? No, no questions from the room.
Okay. The other nice thing that interacts with accounts payable is that we have a fixed asset module. And the fixed asset module lets you manage all of your capital items, non-capital items, and your inventory. It is integrated with accounts payable and the budget so that if an invoice comes in and it, the system automatically forces the clerk that is entering in that invoice to associate it with a fixed asset. So again, it is a place where you can stop and see all of your activity in one place. So again, I want you to imagine that you're at that filing cabinet. You open the drawer and you have a file for each of your assets. If I drill down into this F4 to F150, I can see all of its activity. But one nice thing is that if I simply hover over it, I can see important information at my fingertips, like the data was placed in service, its useful life, what the best base cost was and what the net value is. I can see the serial number, all right there.
We have a question.
Does your system do depreciation of items automatically so that we can be sure that we have some sort of a fund available to replace those items?
Absolutely. And let me show you that because right now I have drilled down into that board of 150. And you can see it's a 2011. It is something that is capitalized and depreciated. Again, we keep the philosophy throughout our applications the same. So again, tabs of activity that you can go in and view. And if I go into the transactions, I can see every single line item that has happened with this, including all of the depreciation. So this is 2011 depreciation, 2012, 2013. And this is really nice because let's say you purchased a sheriff's vehicle. They purchased the vehicle and then there's a whole bunch of invoices that come in after that for what's called the trick-out. You know, there's one, maybe one company doing all the lights and the bars, another company doing the signage, you know, you have your internal radios and cameras. All of those different invoices, each time that they're processed, they're just going to add another line item in here. And so you're going to be able to see all of that activity and what has happened over the life of that, that piece of equipment.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So when you go to see the total asset value of that sheriff's vehicle that had all the extra equipment, will it give you a total or will it give you separate totals for each piece? And then how does the depreciation work on it?
You can have different depreciation methodologies. Again, that control lies with you. So if one group of assets you want to have double declining or another group of assets you want to have straight line, again, that's, that's determined by you. You can see on this particular asset is that it's fully depreciated. At the top here, you can see that the value was $22,960 and you can see that it is fully now depreciated. You're going to see any disposal in here. If I go back a screen and, and take a look at the summary, again, you can see this. Any, again, if it's in this dark gray color, it means the asset has been sold. So you still maintain all of that history on the asset even though you, you've sold it. You can drill down into it and you can see all of the activity that, that occurred.
Okay, and then-
Did it answer your question?
I think so. And then can we get a printout of all the items that were added during the year? All of the items that were sold, junked, whatever?
Absolutely. And in addition to that, you can actually print out inventory sheets for your various departments. So if you also wanted to keep track of the inventory, like maybe the computers and who all has what in the various departments, our system will literally print off a barcode that you can attach to it and you can actually scan in, go by and scan in when it's inventory taking time. So it's completely integrated.
And Karen, is it accurate that each department would have the ability to access their own asset information? If we allowed it, yeah.
Department level, again, person could be maybe read only or read only in reports. Again, that flexibility lies with you. And this is the power of the system. The system does not only meet today's needs, but it, it is so simple to make the changes when you have something new that you would add. Again, that versatility is there. And because you're always using the same software version, we do not have different software versions. Everyone, all users are using the same software. We automatically update the systems for you once a month. We do that at night on the weekends so our customers are not inconvenienced. Due to that, it fosters great collaboration. In the state of Texas where I'm at, we have 13 counties that we service. And some of them are quite large. Our largest is a populace of 835,000. And then we have all the way down to smaller counties with like, you know, 4,000, 5,000 people. And so the system is very flexible and can accommodate various needs.
Nice.
Is there a question about tracking all that?
Sina? Did that answer?
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the nice thing about the assets, I'm sorry, I went too far out, is that again, you can have capital, non-capital items. It's fully integrated. It tracks all of your transactions. You're even able, in each one of these assets, to set up schedules, replacement schedules for all of the various different pieces of equipment within that asset. You can track all of the service history, like when your oil changes was done. You know, again, the versatility is up to you in what you want to track and how you want to track it. So does anybody have any more questions about the fixed assets?
I just have a comment for the board. Just, you know, right now we don't track a lot of our assets. We don't know what we have.
That's why I was interested in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so before we keep going here, I just wanted to, I know we're getting towards the end of our lot of time. You know, kind of pose it to the Curry County team. Is there anything left to make sure that we covered here today? I want to make sure we make the best use of it.
Payroll.
Okay, let's dive in. Payroll is powerful. Well, again, the versatility. We can handle in our system different pay types, shifts groups, really any type of scenario that you want to create. We can even handle different pay frequencies. So let's say the sheriff's department gets paid bi-weekly, but administration gets paid monthly. The system can even accommodate various pay frequencies. And if, the other nice thing about the system too is that all of the regulatory reporting is built in. So the 941s, the EEOC reporting, the Census Bureau reporting, your retirement system reporting, all of that reporting. We update the templates, the interfaces, if you want to send them electronically. All of that is done by us, including updating your tax tables for you. And if I go into payroll, and again, we're at the filing cabinet, we open it up, we have a file for each employee. Again, anything in red is scanned documents. You can control who looks at those. Again, we have tabs of activities. When you set up an employee, you basically set all their information, their pay, their dates of hire, set up the codes for all of the reporting so that it's, it's updated with each paycheck run. You can also see lineages of activity. So if I go in and I take a look at their benefits, I can actually drill down and see in, in all of this activity, yearly detail on the various pieces of activity down to the transaction level. I can see all of that. We also allow, if you so desire, to transfer benefits. We have had clients where, Lord forbid, something terrible happened to their sheriff and people donated sick time while they were recovering. And so our system will even allow you to do that type of activity as well. The other thing is that you are able to go in and you're able to quickly see lineages again. So in this particular screen, I can see every raise since 1996 that Mr. Allen has had. I see all of the detail. And you can type in a description as to why, you know, there was a change. And having that information is very powerful. I can go in, I can view all of the checks, I can print off anything. Again, I can email the information. I can go in and I can look at all their deductions, pay types. We have no problem doing special pay types such as certification pay or if you give different levels of pay for peace officer licensing. Again, the system can accommodate all of that. The other nice thing about the system is that it automatically comes with an employee portal. So employees can actually log- So employees can actually log in. They can view, um, like their deductions. They can look at their paycheck stubs, print them off. It can also print off their W-2s as well. Our system is also compliant with ACH. You know, again, a processor can go in, a clerk or somebody and pull up all of the prior year information for W-2s as well. So everything is very integrated. We also have a payroll timesheet that integrates with payroll. Again, the flexibility is completely up to you. You can have individual employees logging in their time and then it can go out to various managers for approval or changes. We can also accommodate blended methods of timekeeping. So if you, one department uses the payroll timesheets, but you want another department using a time clock, all of that can be interfaced with the payroll module so that none of that information has to be rekeyed. You do have the option, if you so desire, to literally print out timesheets and send them out to the various departments to be worked and approved. Again, that control lies with you. We have entities that manage employees in all sorts of different ways. HR might go in and do the initial setup of the employees, the pay changes and the terminations, while clerks actually do the payroll processing. Again, that flexibility is up to you on who does what in the processes. Does anybody have any questions over that?
You had mentioned that employees could go in and enter their own time. Can you show us an example of how that would work?
Sure. Let me see if I can get into the employee portal real quick. Find it on my desktop. I don't readily see it here, but if they have internet, they just literally click on it. It asks them for their user ID. They have to put in verification information, like a PIN and the last four digits of their social security number to access the system. But I can show you another way, what they would see, and that is in the timesheets, because this is exactly what they would see. So if I drill down into the system, um, I can, and I'm going to pick on the first person here. This is exactly what the employee would see. The information, the dates and all of that would be populated as the system tracks all of that. They would just simply come in here, enter in their time, you know, whatever it might be. And I'm going to do it so it calculates over time. And then, um, maybe this person finally took a couple hours of vacation. The system, you know, they could put it in if you so desired them to or you could just give it to managers to enter in. If there was some sort of special pay type that happened, again, you can create any pay type that you want. But let's say that, um, I don't know, they went to some sort of civic academy and they were there for two hours and you created some sort of pay for that. The system again can accommodate whatever you enact. So if I basically go up and I hit the calculation button, get over here, sorry. Oops, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Well, now the system's slowing down, so I feel bad. But anyway, um, it automatically did the calculation. You, uh, no, I guess it didn't. Hold on, it didn't process yet. I hit the wrong button before. As you can see, it updated all of the time. So they had 36 hours, um, you know, that they actually worked. They had two hours of vacation. They had the civic pay. It calculated out all of the different special pay types that they selected. You can send this out to up to six different levels of approval, if you so desire. And at each level of approval, you can give them different permissions to either update, um, make changes. Again, that flexibility lies with you. The system will also accommodate splitting employees amongst funds, which is, you know, not uncommon in government. So you can split them as many ways as you want to. You can also have people set it up so that, um, different departments are charged for their time. Again, that flexibility rests with you.
One question. Julie? We have a question from Julie Swift.
This is other Julie again. So you answered my one question on allocating, um, time to different funds or different departments. On this timesheet, if we have people that aren't necessarily hourly employees, but they're paid on a, a number of standard hours each pay period, can that be set up on the employee and then all they would enter here is exception time, vacation time, sick time, holiday, that kind of thing?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the beauty of the system. You know, annually, after you have your, your benefit selection for the new year, you just update, um, the system with those elections. We have global commands so that if you decide, okay, we're going to give 2% across the board COLA this year, we just have to put that in one time and it'll apply it to all the employees. Same thing with the deduction code. So let's say you offer two different health plans and Health Plan 1 had a change to it. You could just update that rate and it would apply it to all of the employees that have Health Plan 1. Again, that flexibility is, is up to you. You can create any type of code that you deem necessary. We don't just hand you a can stack of codes. Again, it's what you need because again, this is your system can handle, your needs, your processing. And that is a philosophy throughout our platform that is unique.
Julie has one more.
So if we had, if we had hours that were going to be tied to a grant or a specific activity, is that, would that go under that pay type, the other? And then would it tie to the GL number that's attached to that particular grant or whatever?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So yes, if you have an employee that's paying by grant, when you set up that general ledger account screen, you can create endless project descriptions and codes. So you can have up to six project categories on a particular account number, if you so desire to go to that lane. But let's say you have, let's say you have an inspector out in the field who inspects all of your road projects. And he was funded maybe by various grants. The system could most definitely accommodate that and track it.
Thank you.
And again, this is completely integrated. It can, if you have one department, say the sheriff, entering their time this way and another department using time clocks, again, all of that will interface into the payroll application so that it does not have to be rekeyed by staff. Once the processing is done, it automatically creates the journal entries that go to the general ledger. And in addition, it interfaces with accounts payable. So all of your child support deductions, garnishments, invoices for insurance and stuff are automatically migrated with each pay batch into accounts payable.
Okay, that's good.
So are, great. So what are you thinking so far about the integration? Are you liking what you're seeing? And does it kind of make more sense now about how all of this feeds up into the, the information that Mark and Andrew were showing you with the dashboards and the different charts you could create? How, when people process and create payroll or an AP run, that all of that can feed into the, your visually, your reports that you've created so that you can see all that data? Does that make sense now?
Yes, it does. Sina has another question.
I have another process question. Could you show us cash proceeding process?
Oh, yes.
And how the cash allocations get taken care of?
Again, everything operates off of a code. So you can create whatever code that you would like. And I'm, it, it's kind of a great if you see this visually. It's called a subsystem ID. So you can create whatever code you want for whatever. You're unlimited on the number you can create. And you associate each one of the codes with a general ledger account number. You can create one, let's say you have a miscellaneous for things that you don't get very often. That's going to prompt the cashier to actually enter in account number. You can set that up as well. The nice thing about doing this is that you are able to create customized templates so that a clerk does not have to remember the account numbers or the codes. And so let me show that to you. And again, people at different departments can be doing cash receipting. Again, I want you to imagine you're at the file drawer. You open it up. You can see each cashier's batch for each day. Our system will also handle online payments. We just simply built an interface with the bank and it'll automatically interface into cash receipts or the general ledger. In addition to that, um, if you have, um, let's say, Quartz or JP or somebody that's using a different system and they're collecting maybe monies or whatever, that can be interfaced as well so that you do not have to rekey that activity. This particular item in red right here, a customer tried to make an online payment and they, they miskeyed their account number so the system could not associate their activity. So this is giving, um, the clerk notice that, hey, you need to go in and you need to check this item out. And, and so that's how come it's in red. But I already have a batch opened that I started on November the 22nd. And if I go into it, and right now I'm a super user in the system, so I don't have to enter in a password. But on a regular daily basis, somebody would have to enter in their password to get to their cash. I can go in and I can see every single receipt that I've produced for the day and I can also drill into it. But I want to show you something unique about how I told you you could set up the templates for cashiers. Here's where they would simply enter in whatever, if they knew the subsystem ID, the code, they would just key it in. But you can group the account numbers any way that you would like and create a template. So here's one that we created for a senior scenario. And so this is what pops up for the clerk to fill in. You can fill in any of these fields that you desire. But the clerk no longer has to remember all of these different codes. If there's a line item that they don't need, they don't, they just leave it blank. But this is a very nice feature because very quickly, somebody can enter in a receipt and get the customer, you know, taken care of. The system will also print receipts with the detailed information. You can email the receipts as well. So does that make sense to you, how that special feature works?
Yes.
Okay, great. Having that customization is very, very powerful. Do you have any questions over like how this activity would work? It's pretty, pretty standard, but again, it's completely interfaced with all of the various application modules.
I don't see any questions.
It seems basic, then, then how do the cash allocations?
You have to go to the microphone, Sina.
She can't hear you.
It's wonderful, Karen. I think you guys did a great job. Sina's got one more thing she's going to ask you.
And then how do you, um, do the cash allocations get dispersed?
You, for each of the line items, it's automatically programmed on where it's going to go to in the system. And so that's where the cash allocations occur. If you tell it to go to, uh, general ledger account code for a franchise fee, that's where it's going to go. Again, you set that up beforehand so that the process is automated for you.
Okay, so does it happen at the end of the day then, like everything else?
Whenever you want it to happen. So if you, if, if I was leaving at 12 noon today, I could close out my batch. As you can see on this batch right here, the 9:26 batch, if you go across, you can see that an actual journal entry had been created while my batch does not have a journal entry yet. So it's whenever throughout the day you decide to create a journal entry, you can create it and it'll go over to the general ledger. Again, the flexibility and control lies with you. If you want a supervisor to do that function, a supervisor can do it or you can assign it all the way down to the clerk level.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. We have one other question, not sure about it, but it's a, come on. It pertains to probably accounts receivable.
Is there a way to, in my department, we send out bills sometimes to people for services rendered, we need, we're manually tracking. Is there a way to do it through your system?
Our code enforcement department head's asking that. Were you able to hear him?
Yes, I did. And yes, we do. We have an accounts receivable module that is completely interfaced. So let me show you real quick. I'm going to enter in a receipt and I'm going to show it to you. So, um, if I type in AR for an AR payment and I hit okay, excuse me. I'm going to be able, if I don't know the customer's account number, I can go look. And I'm going to go to an active account so that you can see this. If I select, um, Mr. Allen here, it's going to pop up, uh, his ledger. Currently, Mr. Allen has nothing due. But if he did, you'd be able to see the current amount due, 30 to 60, 60 to 90. You would be able to see his aging. You could go in and you could look at all of his transactions. So if the customer had a question, you could say, oh, you could go in and look and find out and answer whatever question that might be. If you wanted to drill down, you could. Okay, so he received a charge for these three different items. And you'd be able to see all of that activity. Again, if you wanted to, you could drill further down. You could email it. You can email an invoice. You can see all of the activity at a glance. So no need to go back and forth and in and out. If I tried to enter in a payment at this time, the system will also let you set up warnings. Let me go in and select an in. Let me go in and select an invoice for him. It's telling me, hey, this customer is going to make an overpayment. So if a customer is overpaying or underpaying, the system will alert you if you so desire. And you, again, can set the control. If you don't want to accept overpayments, you can have it so it just says overpayment, you know, and, and you would be able to go no further. So yes, but you can set up, again, any code that you want to bill for. So maybe if you're sending out annual bills for whatever, you can do that. Did that help and answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you, guys. It looks like we're wrapping up here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just noticed it's almost 6 o'clock there.
You know, this is, uh, you know, kind of just goes to show, and you know, Karen, I thought that was, uh, you know, fantastic, especially considering other questions on the fly, that the platform is huge. I think we could probably spend a full two days in it. But, you know, I hope this was a good overview, um, and showing you, you know, kind of the key processes that you have and how we might streamline them, and also, you know, lines of being more paperless and, um, you know, really optimizing the way that the whole county is doing.
This is Julie Schmose. I just have a quick question. Our Coney Treasurer, Assessor Clerk, um, Juvenile Department, Sheriff's Office, Roads, couple others, they were not able, they're not, they're not here today. If they do have questions, um, do, is there somebody in particular that they should be contacting to ask those questions?
Yeah, they, they can reach out to me and I can, I'll be sure to include Karen or Mark or whoever the appropriate police expert is.
Okay.
Make sure to get them answered.
Thank you. And thank you to the departments that are here, the district attorney, uh, finance and HR, building, safety, planning and code enforcement. Thank you for showing up.
I guess I have two really important questions. What's the cost of implementation and what's the annual cost?
We, we have a breakdown. They gave us a special package. So if they give you a number now, it would probably scare people. They worked with us and we've been negotiating for a while, and I'm going to provide a project definition to the commission team tonight to show you how that was spread over four years for us.
And then we'll bring it back for the December 11th meeting for discussion.
Okay. They've even agreed to a cost cap on our pricing of our software.
Okay. Commissioner Boyce?
I was just curious, I saw Eastern Standard Time there and heard the, the lady, I apologize, I missed your last name, but you were from Texas? Where were the two gentlemen from calling in?
Oregon and California.
Great.
Andrew?
Yeah. Yeah, no, Andrew Proccato, I'm based out of HQ in Redmond City, California.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Is that all we have? Everybody?
Yeah, and thanks to...
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, thanks everybody for the time and, uh, you know, for those that aren't, uh, you know, government, uh, finance buffs or data heads, um, you know, I appreciate you spending the time too. And, you know, again, please feel free, if there's any questions or, or any other thoughts or, or anything you'd like to answer, please feel free to reach out. I know Charlene has all, all of my details, um, we're happy to answer.
Well, thanks again for all your help and the, and the time it took to present this, and, uh, we wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Bye-bye.
Bye, guys. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
It was very generous of them to meet with us the night before Thanksgiving.
Definitely. Does anyone have any further questions? Anything?
Charlene, certain icon there just to the right of green arrow, there was a camera.
Here?
Go to the microphone.
I just want to make sure my, um, we had to send it to my work email because they have us locked out here, so.
So while Charlene's working on that, I just want to explain, Charlene did put together quite a lengthy packet of information to share with you. It talks about the cost savings and the pricing. She asked me to give it a final review, which I did not get done before the meeting, but, um, she'll get that out to you in time for the December 11th meeting.
I have it to you tonight. It's quite, um, bold.
So you were wondering if they were looking at us while they were doing the meeting?
No, I just, I didn't see, I, I realized why I didn't see a printer icon on there. I saw a camera icon, and so that was just interesting to me because there's always this question to go paperless, and at some point it will become quite practical. Who knows when that is for us? Well done, Mr. Harvey.
The, this team is absolutely amazing, and I hope you caught, um, nevermind. Thank you.
Nothing else.
Nothing further? Workshop meeting is adjourned. Happy Turkey Day, everyone.
Same to you.